The June 14, 2016 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. And before we go any further, I'd like to recognize Carter McDonald, McDonald, a troop 258, a troop located at Moss Bluff, and he's working on his citizenship in the community. Congratulations, thanks for being here. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic device or put them on vibrate. Later in the, in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided by individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system of the school board only. Presentation to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily take action, you must first complete a PEAT form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline, discipline matter, please complete the lean, the lime green form. This form must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
This is Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mr. George Solomon, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Production Coordinator, please introduce the students who will be, be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you, Mr. James. These students will serve as inspiration without even speaking a word. Here's why. These three members of the class of 2016, who all graduated from one of our high schools, or actually three of our high schools, they know what it always means to be there. Why? Because they have never missed a single day of school. I'm gonna say that again. They've never missed a single day of school. Two thousand, three hundred and forty days of school, and they were there for two thousand, three hundred and forty days of school. I've already talked with each of them, and they know that I think pretty much any company they want to work for, any organization they want to be part of, they will welcome them with open arms with that kind of commitment. Let me share a little bit about them, and I'll ask each of them to come up as I introduce them. Lindsay Downs is first. Some of this information may have changed since I wrote this, so let me know if it has. Lindsay graduated from Westport High School last month. In 2003, she started as a kindergarten student at Romeo Elementary, and then advanced to Howard Middle, Vanguard High, and then to Westport High School. She's 18 years old and is the daughter of Stephen and Larissa Downs of Dunellen. Next up, we have Kyle Rogers. Kyle graduated from Forest High School. He started his education at Maplewood Elementary as a kindergarten student back in 2003. That doesn't sound too long ago, does it? And then he advanced to Fort King Middle, and then of course to Forest High School. He's 18 years old and is the son of Danny and Dana Rogers of Ocala. And last, but certainly not least, we have Leonard Vassar. Leonard graduated from North Marion High School, and he began at Reddick Collier Elementary as a pre-kindergarten student in 2002. So really, he has a year up on these guys. But nevertheless, he moved on to North Marion Middle and then to North Marion High. He is 17 years old and is the son of Leonard and Linda, Linda Vassar of Reddick. And I would like to present each of you with this certificate that reads, "For outstanding dedication to education, the Marion County School Board proudly recognizes," you put your name in there, "throughout your entire public school career, you never missed a day of class attending Marion County Public Schools. Thank you for your perseverance, which has certainly contributed in a real way to your success and that of Marion County Public Schools." And the sign, or the seal is affixed to this, and each of our board members and our superintendent has signed your certificate. So Lindsay, let me present that one to you. Kyle, to you.
Thank you.
And Leonard, to you as well. And Board, I know you want to say something to them, and after those comments and questions, we'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
First of all, I want to congratulate the parents, because your moms and dads were the ones pushing you to school when you didn't want to go in first grade. So congratulations, moms and dads. You're, you're the, the wind beneath their wings. Also, what, I want to know what you're, what you're wanting to do now, now that you graduated.
Well, plans have changed a lot since graduating even.
A month ago?
When you think you've it figured out graduating, you don't. It changes.
Yeah.
And so hopefully, I will be going to CF in the fall, and I will be able to go to Direct Connect to go to UCF to do a double major for arts and business.
Very good. Good for you.
Kyle, you're up.
I'm gonna be a firefighter.
All right.
You look like it.
It's okay. Come up here, it's okay.
Nope. Nope.
Leonard doesn't want to share his plans at this time, but that's okay. What, congratulations to each of you. Anybody else?
Miss Stacy.
I would like to say congratulations. My children, I couldn't, I had three, I couldn't get them through kindergarten without missing a day. And so my, so I wasn't, you know, I wasn't as good as your mom. And so, again, congratulations to your parents, because I'm telling you, I, I can picture, you know, there were times you probably didn't feel good, and, "Oh, Mom, and, come on, you can do it." And she encouraged you to, "Come on, kick it in gear," especially as you were moving along through the years, and you had done so well for so long, and she encouraged you. So just congratulations to you. And I can tell you right now, y'all will all three be very successful. I already know that, because people who just have, we have a friend that calls it grit, just has grit, and that's what it takes to be successful. And thank you for making us proud.
I just think they're very, thank you very, very much. I'm so, I'm so, thank you, okay?
Ms. King.
Congratulations. You guys, to me, displayed character. You are showing me that you're responsible, you persevere, you have endurance, and again, I'm sure whatever career or path you take, you're gonna be successful. And don't be surprised if you change your mind again. I happen to live with a college student, and I know, you know, and it's okay, nothing's set in stone.
The thing I'd like to say to you is a rule that I've always said to seniors. If you come to school, you work hard and behave, good things will happen. And this is, when I look out there and look at you guys, I know you have followed those rules, because when you come to school, good things usually happen. So I want to congratulate you guys for really being, being able to persevere through all the things that went on. Good things will happen to you from this point on. Remember that. Thank you. Okay.
You guys will help lead us. If you'll stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Christian. I think Mom wanted a picture of-
We're gonna take pictures out there?
Out there, okay. I was just making sure that-
We don't need your meetings.
Okay. Mrs. Superintendent.
Board, I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 14, 2016 school board meeting. With the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, and second by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 5, 2016 administrative briefing and work session that made 10th, 2016 school board meeting. May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I will now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Okay, thank you. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, Section 286.0114 of our Florida statutes, school board has adopted procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting regarding one of tonight's agenda items or in a matter relating to school district operations. School board has adopted these procedures to ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to speak and be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. As Chairman James told you earlier, public speaker forms are located on the table right near the front door. The completed forms were due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 PM. Chairman James will call tonight's speakers, if any, prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in order of receipt of forms by the school board's assistant. Based on time considerations, the school board by a majority vote may decide to limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten presentation times, move public comment time to a different position on tonight's agenda, or eliminate the public comment time for this meeting altogether and reschedule it for a future meeting. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record, spell your last name. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes of time. If there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board can seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When a speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner, therefore verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Unloved, unsolicited commercial solicitations are also prohibited. School board may in its own initiative request informational presentations on matters involving the Marion County school system. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. Speakers may use handouts or audiovisual presentations, however, they must have been provided to the board assistant at least 48 hours prior to the meeting and have a total length of five minutes or less. Only a student's parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to, or identification of other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. Thank you very much for your attention to these requirements, Mr. Chairman, and back to you.
Brenda, do, do we have anyone? No speakers tonight. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C28, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mrs. Stacy, I need your vote. I need your vote.
Oh. I don't know where I'm at right now, I guess. I forgot to click it.
May I have a motion to approve the agreement with Catapult Learning LLC for at-risk students? May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Ms. Boynton. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Yes, I did. And I spoke to, to Ms. Brenda about this, that I just wanted to make a comment, because we've talked about this at our workshop, at our work session, and I understand how everyone feels, and that's fine. But I want, for the record, to say that I believe that it's not a good thing for the taxpayers, and I don't really believe it's a good thing for students. We have 19 to 25, so I averaged out 23 students if we pass, and that, that is $48,000. Basically, they're there to get a diploma, and it's $48,000 a student to get a diploma there. I do realize we get 10% of the 1,001, roughly, you know, back into our coffers here for those students, but I believe that our education dollars, it all comes from the state. And I think, when we are not being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, then I feel that, you know, I have, I have to voice my opinion on that, and that is my opinion, and I know that others don't agree with me, that's fine, about the cost. And I know that this is good for some children, but I also know that with Florida Virtual and other programs, that they could easily get this through some of those programs in the same way. I think it probably hurts as many students as it helps, because it gives them the false assumption that people are gonna give you many, many chances in life, and at least if they went to, to the Florida Virtual, it would be a Florida curriculum more than the Catapult curriculum. We, we don't, I don't have a clue what that curriculum is, but I know that they do have to pass the test and everything, but there's just so many ways that I believe that our high school diploma is just being devalued, and when we give children just that many chances to get it, I just don't believe, I believe for everything that we've done good, I think we've taken something away from them also, because the children that get that diploma would have gotten that diploma through Florida Virtual or another organization for much less money. And I'm proud of those that do, but they would have gotten their diploma anyway. Thank you.
Any other comment?
We did have this discussion at our last work session, and I am also in agreeance. I, you came up with the number 23. I recall it being, the average was 20-ish, so I was thinking-
I'm thinking it was 19 to 25.
Okay, 'cause I was thinking, okay, if we're looking at $75,000 per student, and these are taxpayer dollars, you know, there are other avenues. We have virtual school, we have CTAE. I, I think it's a high price tag, and I think there are other avenues, so I will also vote no on this.
One of the things I just want to just share with the board is I was one of the people that really worked hard to provide kids another avenue. And when I say that, the school system has changed twofold. Okay, when I look at the, the locations of, of the centers, where these kids are, we just, I just saw where we put one that's out in the shores now, and, and where we began to reach out to these youngsters and be able to get those kids to do, to, to move into a setting where they can get their, their high school diploma. I want all of, I want the people that are, that's out there to know that if we want kids to succeed, then we have to provide them opportunities that is a little different. And I understand people think that kids can learn by sitting in front of a computer, but it's not necessarily so. Kids are, kids have to have interaction. And when I look at the vastness of this county, and where, and where these programs are located, when I say where they're located, I, we have program, have kids coming to us from North Marion, from Dunellen, from Marion Oaks, and, and when we have a program that reach out to these kids, and let me say that, reach out to them, we gotta be creative and innovative. One of the things I'm gonna say to you more than anything else about this whole thing, Board, we had, we've had programs, but we must continue to innovate. We are talking about dollars that we would not have gotten if we would not have this program, because this program bring in dollars that we have lost, and these kids are out there, and they're not doing anything. So I'm a very strong supporter of it, simply because I know that the dollars that, that we're talking about are dollars we would not have gotten. Ms. Stacy, I want to finish what I'm saying.
This one's in my hand.
And when I say that, these are dollars that, that have been, for some reason, avoided the school system, because these students was not in school. Okay. Ms. Stacy.
I don't agree that it's free dollars. Anything that comes into our system, somebody pays. And it's dollars that we might not have for our classroom teacher raises, it's coming out of the education budget at, at the, at the Department of Education somewhere. It's not the store, it just doesn't drop 1.1 or 2 million dollars on our head. It comes from somebody's pocket. And I just believe that we've got to be more responsible, and, and this is the problem I have, Mr. James, with school programs. If it's, I compare it to a bad pot of stew. If you've got a burned pot of stew, making more of it and letting it simmer longer isn't gonna ever improve the taste. There comes times where we have to reevaluate the programs that we've got, and if they're not really working for the taxpayers and for the students, and, and, and there's better ways to do things, then there comes a point where you have to cut the program off. I don't believe that it's ever a travesty that we try something, and then it doesn't work. The travesty is that we cover up the fact that it's not working, and we keep it going, and we keep putting twists to it. If it's a bad pot of stew, it's time to throw it out, and let's think of something else, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, and I want to remind everybody, I asked all of you to go out and visit the programs. Did you? Did you go out? No, no, you don't have to answer this, 'cause I'm gonna call the question, because I want everybody to understand, when I have an opportunity to ask them, I have visited those programs. And when I sit here and, and say, "Guys, this is, this is a good, this is a good spend for our dollars," I'll call the question then. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to approve the following donation? $1,800 to Bellevue High School from the Florida Thirbreds, Thirbred Breeders. Coagulation analyzer, analyzer valued at $2,500 to Community Tech Adult Education from Regional General Hospital, Williston. This donation, previously approved on May 10, 2016, is being resubmitted to reflect the tangible, non-monetary donation. $2,500 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from their business partner, Seville M.D.P.H. via the Public Education Foundation. $2,500 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from their business partner, Infectious Disease Association of North Central Florida LLC via the Public Education Foundation. $2,000, $2,000, $2,000, $2,000, $4,000 donation each for a total, for a total of $8,000 to Dunellen High School from the Monroeage Family Foundation. $5,000 to Dunellen High School from Century Lane Clark M. Williams Foundation. $2,970 to Eighth Street Elementary School from Eighth Street Elementary PTO. $2,273.73 to Fessenden Elementary School from Fessenden Elementary PTO. $2,500 to Fort McCaw School from the Annie and Inc. Grantford Garden. $4,000 to Hammont Elborne Junior Elementary School from Hammont Boeing PTO. $1,000 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from the Heart of Florida Health Center. $1,473.82 to Lake Ware Elementary, Lake Ware Middle School from Lake Ware FFA alumni. $1,000 to South Ocala Elementary School from their Wells Fargo Foundation. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from Gateway Bank of Central Florida. May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
So moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
Second by Mrs. King. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Ely, you got your numbers, so I'll let you do-
What's the total? Da-da-da-da. Okay. We thank so much, we give so much thanks to our businesses and business partners, and Regional Hospital in Williston, the coagulation analyzer, that's incredible, but thank you so much for, for your gifts, and we continue to look out for our schools and care about our schools the way you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting, meeting reminder, the next administrative briefing work session is scheduled for Thursday, June 23, 2016, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to review advanced degree supplements, revised job classification description for paralegal, new job classification description for multi-tier system of, of support specialists, and a board superintendent responsibility, as well as administrative law judge for the students and employees' hearing. We will also be appointing a school board associate, association legislative representative for the fiftieth year of 16, and attorney, and attorney-client session regarding the SCI will immediately follow the June 23, 2016 administrative briefing and work session. An additional administrative briefing and work session will be held on Thursday, June 30, 2016, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of this work session is to review the 2017 health insurance option, construction projects, update charter schools liability insurance, and Marion County Public School employee political activity in the workplace. Board comments. Before I leave, that board, I know it's summer, so let's keep that in mind as we go through these work sessions, we gonna hit them right on. Okay, thank you. Comments, we'll start with Ms. Stacy.
Okay. I went to a school meeting, my state school board meeting, on, last week, and was able to meet with other school board members that are working hard to drive some things, the Coalition of Florida School Board Members Association I belong to, and we already have sponsors on a couple of bills to go, that we are presenting, to move the testing window to the last two weeks of school. We will be lobbying for that this year, I will be lobbying for it, to move the testing window to the last two weeks of school, instead of smashing it in there, because what's happening, we're hearing, we've been in focus groups with parents and teachers across the state, and in those focus groups, we're finding out that even the teachers and the parents say that after the tests are over, that they're never back on a real test, and no one's really gets back on tests. It's kind of the end of the year, parties and the end of the year, they try to get back on tests, but they're just so thankful that the tests are over that they don't really get back to, to the drive that they had before. So by moving the test to the last two weeks of school, we're hoping that that will help that problem, to keep the kids on task till the end of the year, instead of just part of the year. We're also lobbying that any test that cannot be taken within two weeks on the computers, we will not stretch it out a month. If it can't be done within two weeks, we, the districts will need to decide paper and pencil for the students that we don't have enough computers for. We're thinking possibly the elementary students, we will be doing a lot of paper pencil tests if we can't, if we, if districts are not prepared for testing, so that we're not uprooting libraries, we're not uprooting classrooms, and taking half the class for testing, and then the rest of the kids are watching videos, or whatever it is, and the teachers are telling me what's going on. It's going on across the state, it's not just here. So we are looking at that. We're also talking about the national norm testing, a little bit, not as much, but we have some of us that are really interested in that, the, possibly the IO or the SAT. SAT and ASAT, ASAT has told us that they can actually develop a standardized test for all grade levels, not just high school. So we've got several major irons in the fire that we will be lobbying for, and I'm excited about that. But on a different note, you know, we talk, you know, we sit here and we talk about following board policy, and we need to follow board policy, and it seems like, for all of us, it's more or less, you know, becomes like a suggestion. And I was presented with some copies, I'll send to the school board members, everybody take one. This is a picture of one of our secretary's desks that has a political, Mr. Tomlin's political sign literally taped to the desk, that is totally against school board policy. And so, you know, as we're having lessons about following school board policy, we do have a policy on campaigning in our schools. That is not on someone, that is literally taped to a desk. And so, you know, it's just time that possibly, it might be time for us to start entertaining the idea of the appointed superintendent, and talking along those lines. to take fifty percent of the politics out of our school system because it seems to be just causing disruption and, um, and it's, maybe it's just time. And so I would like to be looking at that coming up soon, so thank you.
Ms. Ely.
I want to encourage the students and parents for sure. Take your students, take your children to the public libraries, they're open this summer. Um, I, I would like to see more reading rather than just hanging out in, on the computers, but reading is so important, so parents, please, get, get your children to the library. Also, today is Flag Day, in case you might not have noticed, June fourteenth. When I was in elementary school, we, in Buffalo, New York, we were still in school through the end of June, so we always had a big Flag Day parade, so I'm, I'm ready to pray my red, white, and blue. And lastly, I just want us to keep our, our, the families of all of the victims in Orlando in our thoughts and prayers because that was a horrible tragedy so close to us. It could happen anywhere, and it happened so close, but keep them in your prayers and, as, as I have. And we'll, we'll make it through. We're, we're a strong state, we're a strong country, but this was, this really was a big hic, hiccup for all of us. Thank you.
Ms. Boynton.
Thank you, but I thank you for what you just said. Thank, thank you.
Ms. King.
Um, last Friday, FSA and FCAT science scores were released. And after reviewing data, I find it alarming that more than half our elementary students are non-proficient in reading, math, and science. I am requesting that we have a work session. I don't want a session explaining what a test is or providing excuses as to why our students were unsuccessful, but a work session with strong leadership providing answers and solutions. In the two thousand sixteen-seventeen year, what will be different? Is our curriculum relevant and up to date with our current standards? Do all our schools have writing programs? If not, we need to think about getting them. Are all programs being implemented with fidelity, or are they inadequate? And something that we need to eliminate. Do Marion County teachers have sustainable, quality professional development? We cannot continue to repeat the same mistakes. If it's not working, change it. We do not have time to spare, and time is of the essence, and we need to have an urgency to give Marion County students the quality education that they deserve. I also question if leadership knew that our scores would be this low by looking at various assessments, progress monitoring, and diagnostic data we collected throughout the year. If they did know, what proactive approach did we take, and was it successful? And if they did not know, what is the significance of those numerous assessments? As board members, we are tasked and we are trusted by our community to spend tax dollars wisely. I urge us to question every request and purchase for positions, programs, and materials that have been used in the past and are not showing proof of adequate, adequate learning gains by our students. Nothing should be overlooked and unturned by this administration or this board. So I am requesting, you know, that we address this sooner than later. I don't know, we need to put that on.
I'll, I'll take it when you finish.
Okay, and then I also want to take a minute and recognize Mr. Hoin in the audience today. He has been an advocate for education. He actually was on the campaign trail for a short while in two thousand fourteen at the young age. I believe you, you were twenty then. Yeah, he was twenty, and he's gonna be leaving Marion County and you're heading to Connecticut tomorrow morning, and we just wish you the best, and I know you'll be successful in everything you do up there.
So wait, I, I love this kid.
I know.
That means you're not coming back? Okay.
But then he's going back up.
Yeah, then he's going back up permanently. He's going to UConn.
Okay, all right, we gotta talk. Okay, go ahead.
And then also, I do want to acknowledge that Sunday is Father's Day, and I just want to say to all the dads out there, Happy Father's Day.
Okay, one of the things Ms. King talked about was putting in a work session. And Mrs. Superintendent, I know we talked about that today in terms of putting together works to, uh, a work session on dealing with test scores and what we need to do and look at it. So Brenda, would you look at a date in which we can bring that? I would like to try and have this in place before school year, uh, the school year. That's one of the agendas that, things that we talked about today. It was one of those things we talked about today, okay?
But not just scores, like, I don't want a presentation of a test and what it is and, and I really want meat and potatoes, what took place in the past and what are we doing different starting August tenth?
Ms. Lake.
I'd just say, following up on Ms. Stacy's concern on the political activity in the workplace, I did do a memorandum on that recently, which I think you saw, and I'm scheduled to talk about that in the June thirtieth workshop. So, but in the interim, I'll be happy to address individual concerns.
Okay, Brenda? Mrs. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman James. A number of our school-based and district administrators are attending the Florida Association of School Administrators State Conference this week, FISA conference. Two noteworthy events are, have occurred just today. One, Reddick-Cauger Elementary School Gina Dickey has been recognized by FISA for receiving one of, I think, six or seven Little Red Schoolhouse awards. She has spoken to us before about the program that she takes her upper-level kids on, the graduation and beyond, beginning with the end in mind to encourage those students who have very minimal encouragement to go on to school after high school. She's gone to visit some post-secondary schools, and that program was recognized. And I thought that's pretty interesting and very rewarding to her. Also, each year Commissioner Stewart holds a Leadership Academy. About a hundred and twenty-five or so individuals participate in that, both principals and assistant principals from around the state, it's a year-long program. Megan Lecito, who's K-12 Academic Services Coordinator there, just finished this year. Stacy Varner, who you recently appointed to Bellevue Elementary School as principal, finished her first year in the program. And John Curley, our Principal Vanguard, finished actually his second year because he was going through a facilitator and training program. We're very pleased with those young administrators as we prepare them to lead our schools. The comment has already been made that our FSA results are in. I have already asked John McGowan to prepare what I think is the first step in that, Mrs. King, and I appreciate your comments there, that right now, certainly our principals are reviewing school, teacher, and student results, all the way down to individuals, and our district is reviewing district and school results. And I've asked John to be prepared to give us again an overview of those assessment results as the first step in, in our journey down the pathway that you so adequately described. Summer school, we've talked about summer schools in full swing right now. We have almost twenty-five hundred students participating. We have a hundred students, a hundred and two students in VPK, four hundred and forty-nine students in third-grade reading camp. We have some STEM Con programs going around with almost three hundred students in it, ESY students who are required to have their programs throughout the summer, just ninety-two students there. Twenty-first Century Learning Community, we have a hundred and eighty-three students. Driver Education for the first three weeks, a hundred and twenty-five students. Two big programs, High School Credit Recovery and Middle School Unit Recovery, almost four hundred students combined there, and about seven hundred students taking Marion Virtual School Credits, Units there. And a final note that I'll, I'll share, I'd like to share individual issues, that the Forest High School Junior ROTC Academic Team, that's right, the ROTC Academic Team, was one of two hundred and twenty-five academic teams in ROTC programs competing in a national academic bowl championship, and they're one of the top eight teams. And they are now going to Washington DC for their face-to-face meeting in, in the end of June. We're very proud of that program, so ROTC does academic things. You know, at the last board meeting I mentioned to you, the academic things that our sports programs do, so I'm very proud of what our students are accomplishing. But that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Let me just thank Ms. Boynton and Ms. King for going down to the, to the Florida School Boards Association, and I understand, Ms. Ely, you were not there. But I also like to give kudos to Mrs. King for doing an outstanding job on, on her leading of her committee. And Ms. Boynton, thank you for being there to support her, and we really appreciate that. Some things I, I just, I would like to just share with you, though. We did learn quite a bit, and we shared some ideas with, with our colleagues from all sixty-seven counties that was there. And it's, it's always good to do that. We did look at the issue with the transgender, and I think we went and looked at it. And really, we, we are right there on, almost on the same page as the rest of these districts, so that's just one of the things. But one thing I would like to, uh, to share with you in reference to that, I do plan to create, establish that, a committee to, to look into that. And some of the people, I've talked with the superintendent about getting that group together, so we will have a plan so we can help our administrators and, and kids at the beginning of the school year. So this is something that we're not taking very likely, but we are moving along in that sense to look at what we're doing. Some other things that, uh, I asked the superintendent, let's focus on the sixteen, um, and the seventeen, sixteen and seventeen school year, how we want to start, and this is where the testing came up when we were talking about that. Some other issues that we talked about was in terms of creating middle school athletics and, I, I will say that, just looking at doing some middle school athletics and volleyball, track, and basketball, just to try and add something to the, to curriculum for those kids in, in middle school. And hopefully, we can go along with that in terms of the FFA, FFA, and, and providing that, so we have a little bit more for the kids so we can get them invested in our schools. I asked them to look into that, and it's just one of those things where, where, when I say look into it, we look at how much it costs and we look at the impact of it, because I know they do a lot of this stuff in Citrus County and around, and it could help our kids. And I know we got some other issues that we need to, to deal with. In terms of, of where we, of where we are, it's the end of the, the school year. The school year is over, we're getting ready to, to do it again. And this is why we need to make sure we have a clear focus. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity of sitting with our board and having a, a legitimate work session, legitimate work session. That don't mean anything other than the fact that a focused work session on what we want to accomplish in the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. And we need to do that before, uh, before we start, before the schools start, in other words. Other than that, I want to commend everybody for being here tonight. I know it's beyond six o'clock, and a lot of our employees are just now getting off. And I know, as we go through this process, I know we require a lot of you, and we, we thank you for being here. Okay, before we address expulsion matters, I would like to acknowledge that the board members have received administrative placing, uh, placement list for students through the May sixteen, uh, May twenty-sixth, two thousand six, sixteen. Ms. Folcata, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak, uh, to speak on their child's disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. sixteen dash one zero zero E, J.D. sixteen dash one zero one E, J.D. sixteen dash one zero two, J.D. sixteen dash one zero three, and J.D. sixteen dash one zero four with educational services through the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by, by Ms. King. All in favor signify by saying aye. Who is it?
Listen up. Kevin, can you do the screen, please?
I think we can get by.
There we go.
The motion passed five-zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? It was so moved by Ms. Boynton. Second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passed. I'm gonna say, the motion passed five-zero. Okay.